I'm an attorney by profession, but please don't hold that against me. Um, I practiced law for approximately five years. And I moved into academia where I managed an international legal studies program over at the law school at DU. And here I am, uh, ten years later. Uh, I'm very, very happy, um, to be here. Uh, I have my resume also, if anyone's interested, just to hand out. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of my short-term goals for the organization. Um, in the next six months, I'm hoping to focus on four things. Um, the first being foundation building, uh, sort of setting up some solid governance and financial practices for the organization. Um, my next goal would be, uh, researching and working on outreach, uh, to look for potential fundraising sources for the organization. Um, I'm gonna focus primarily on board development. Uh, I believe that building a solid board, it really is the fi- foundation for, uh, good fundraising practices. Um, and, uh, in the next actual month or so, my biggest priority is, uh, a trip to Adama, Ethiopia, uh, to sort of wrap up our sister city relationship, uh, with Adama, Ethiopia. Um, and then hopefully upon return from Adama, I'd like to, uh, work on, uh, work on existing sister city relationships that were established, uh, previously, uh, but have lain dormant for a while. There are three cities. Uh, my first focus is with Songnam, Korea. Uh, it's a city in South Korea that I'd like to work on, uh, possibly getting a delegation here, getting a de- delegation there. Um, and my final, uh, you know, short-term goal would be to, uh, work on outreach, uh, and collaboration, collaboration building for the organization. Um, so I also believe that's, uh, really key to good fundraising and, uh, you know, organizational practices. So, um, that's my brief statement. Debbie had said that perhaps people might have some questions for me, and I'm having to answer some. Uh, I know we only have five minutes, so.
I would like to say that Carlin is going to be reaching out to all of you to set up a one-on-one with you in the near future, but probably not until after, uh, Ethiopia trip. Brad?
Are you, uh, full-time, or what's your number of hours you're, you're hired for?
I am full-time.
Okay.
Are people from the community going to Ethiopia? Who, who is the delegation?
Sure. So we've just finalized our delegation. Uh, we'll have the mayor going, uh, city councilwoman Markert, who I have not yet had the pleasure of meeting. Hi, Molly.
I won't be late for the plane, but I'll, um...
We have a representative from the Community College of Aurora. His name is Christopher Tambary, and he runs the ESL program at the Community College of Aurora. Um, it will be me. We'll have a staff person led by Chanel Reed. And, uh, why am I forgetting? We have six people, and Skip is coming. Uh, no, it is coming, the city manager. So that is our delegation. We also have a relatively large community group that is not part of the official delegation, and they will be accompanying us as well. And there's about twelve members from that group.
That's good.
Anything else? Thank you.
Pleasure to meet you. I look forward to talking to you individually. Thank you.
I did think of what I was trying to think of. We, you also have another staff position, and I was kind of, if you, can I just look at Roberto? I thought I saw him there. But somewhere in the, is it your position or her position? It's yours. Okay. All right. Sorry.
Sorry. Not yet. No, no, no staff positions yet.
But you're part city and part sister city, or you're all sister city?
All sister city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So now, um, let's talk about the council appointment to intergovernmental agencies. And Chanel is going to lead us through that.
Good evening, Mayor Potem and Council. I was asked to bring back this item from December twenty-second to go over four follow-up items or questions that, um, council asked. Um, the first question was referencing, um, Adams County Aging Network and the appointment of Rene Keener. Um, in contacting the network, Rene Keener has not been present at board meetings since July. The board reached out to her, and she did not respond, so they took it as a resignation. So we'll need an appointment for, um, for that particular agency.
Okay. Uh, would we do, uh, do we ask for recommendations here, or do we, can we go back and think about that, or?
I nominate one.
It's up to you. It's up to the council how they want.
Our mayor.
Molly.
Can we ask our Aurora council for whatever it's called? Commission? We have a commission on aging. You're a commission assistant group?
Yeah, the seniors.
What's your commission?
The seniors.
Can we ask them to recommend someone?
I think that...
I must want to say that...
I think Brad, did you have your hand up?
I'm just gonna ask who, or what, has it always been staff, or who's traditionally been on this as our representative, if anybody knows?
As far as the record I have, it's always been Rene. As the city's representative.
And Rene was highly involved with the board on, of the, uh, senior hub, and that we were important to also. So I, I'm thinking, you know, um, maybe we ask the senior hub for a person, or...
Okay.
Um, and, and that maybe we also talk to our, um, committee for seniors. Sheila over at the senior center might have a good idea of who might be a person for us.
So does it make sense that you ask Chanel to reach out to a couple people and bring back recommendations and let us talk about it at our next, Debbie session?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Chanel, I'll send you Linda Rinali's information from, uh, the senior hub.
Okay. So let's do that.
Um, the next question that council asked for us to bring back is regarding the Adams County Council of Governance, their quarterly meetings. Currently, they meet on the fourth Wednesday of the first month of each quarter. Um, and council member Burson, if I recall, requested that we contact Adco to see if we could switch that meeting because we had a conflict with a few members. So I'll try to refer to him, let him address that.
We reached out to them, and they said that was a decision of the, of the group as they met, and so at the January twenty-eighth meeting, if we could bring that up as part of their new business of the program, to leave it up to the group to make a decision whether they want to remove those meeting dates. But until the twenty-eighth, that was when they were formally gathering, and they had not set a schedule for the rest of the year. So, uh, I don't know if any council members, because we have that conflict, will be there. I know staff will be there, and we'd be happy to pass along the request, but if there aren't any councils or members who are planning on attending on the twenty-eighth, is there anybody, the Commerce City is hosting?
Yeah, Commerce City is hosting. I'd have to send out the invitation, um, with the, with the time and location, but Commerce City is hosting the first Adco meeting on January twenty-eighth. I, I did however, receive a schedule today for, um, Adco, at least for the year, so, um...
So I'm happy to pass along the request and mention that we have mayor and several others who have conflicts always on those Wednesdays, and see if we might have some flexibility to do that on the twenty-eighth.
Do staff always go?
Yes. We generally rotate with senior staff between the DCM, myself, and Skip. We usually make an effort to attend those dinners.
Yep.
Okay. Then I guess we need to wait until after January twenty-eighth to make that decision.
Um, the next question is regarding Aracalh County Commission, Community Corrections Board. Um, council asked for a recommendation, and Skip and interim chief, Chief Jones gave a recommendation. The recommendation is, in your backup, as the first primary representative being Lieutenant Scott, no, sorry, Lieutenant Jett Lanigan as the representative, and Lieutenant Scott Torman will, um, be the alternate.
Are there any other suggestions from council?
Well, I, I would just like to say that Lieutenant Lanigan is a sterling, uh, gentleman and would, would do very well at whatever he takes on as an endeavor. He will do excellent.
Are there any other comments?
I second that.
Has he been asked, or is it?
Yeah.
Is everyone comfortable?
He's been volunteering.
Is everyone comfortable with that recommendation, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And then our last question, um, is regarding the Aurora Public Schools Citizens Fund Oversight Committee. Um, council wanted to know if this committee still exists in its meeting, and I talked with Pam Morella on, at APS, and this committee has been, um, disbanded and they no longer need to meet, so we don't need an appointment for that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have two things coming back, and I have a question. Chanel, did you happen to, on the, uh, NLC staff committees, did you happen to put my name on there with transportation?
Yes, that's actually on another list. Um, we have three lists. We broke the list out by mayor and council appointments, so those are the appointments that you made. And then we have another list with elected officials' involvement, which is kind of where you choose to volunteer your service, and then we have one with city staff.
Okay.
So you're on the elected official involvement list.
All right. Because the one that's in here doesn't have, it's the old one.
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Here. Good job.
Thank you. Okay. So now, so Bearco, are you ready?
Yes.
We'll go into the council advocacy in DC.
I'll be brief, since this is really an adult council discussion with regards to preference. As you recall, um, as part of our federal advocacy effort in DC, we have typically used a national conference, a National League of Cities Conference in March, the National Congress of Cities Conference is entitled, uh, usually the first or second week in March, uh, to serve as both an opportunity to be involved in NLC, but also do our Capitol Hill and congressional delegation and any other visits we could do in Washington, DC. Um, uh, the issue is that so does every other city in the country. Not every other city, but most of the contingent folks that send folks to NLC also use that opportunity to meet with their delegation, visit, uh, federal executive agencies as well as, uh, Congress. Um, as a result, um, we have been part of a large contingent which, uh, as I've been informed by congressional staff members and folks in our offices, has been generally termed Municipal Week. And so, uh, there's, there are tense demands on the electeds and staff during that time. As a result, we are one of many and, uh, often don't receive the, either the elected officials' time or have very limited time with, um, with congressional staff, chiefs of staff, deputy chiefs of staff, legislative directors. Uh, we, during the course of PIR meetings during the past week, we had several conversations about, uh, having a separate trip, uh, separate and apart from the NLC trip, not in, in exchange from, because I know several members are part of NLC committees, so we're not proposing a, uh, either-or situation, but a separate trip which would provide for kind of the undivided attention of the folks we're meeting with in order to have, um, councils and the city of Aurora's priorities kind of be center-focused and kind of more strategic in when we meet with those folks, where we can come in for one day, um, one morning, have meetings the afternoon, meetings the next day, and fly back. Uh, so really only a one-evening trip and two-day trip to visit with our congressional delegation and any other executive agency, whether that's Department of Transportation or the FAA, whatever our priorities might be that you've set for that year, that we're much more strategic in that visit, and that those that we are meeting with can, uh, give us their undivided attention, and we can really, um, I think, be more effective in our advocacy. I included in the backup a, a memo from Holland and Knight, our new federal lobbyists, who even in our interviews with, uh, during the RFP process, strongly recommended this as an option and felt that we, uh, uh, would be much better served, uh, doing this than, as opposed to having only our opportunity during the DCE. So with that, I'll leave it to, um, to the council member discussion.
Are you proposing to make that change this year or next year? You know, most of us have already made our reservations and planning on being there Wednesday, and I don't think there's anything going on at NLC on Wednesday because everybody is off to visit people in T. L.
We're proposing it for this year.
I, Bob, kind of, I don't see any harm in both options, but like Bob, CML does stuff, other cities do stuff, y'all have community meetings.
We're not proposing to change any of the staffing. I, I will continue to staff if there are meetings that we have and things that we can still do during the March meeting. We certainly can entertain those, but this would be an additional trip in which we could, uh, have our priorities focused and be the, be an additional opportunity for us to have advocacy. What we're seeing on the Wednesday visits is that we're just not getting the, the meetings, and I think Councilman Brooke can attest that, we're just not getting the, the time, you know, really to get five minutes where somebody comes in and we're shuffled in, and then the next group comes in. So we're not proposing to change that we wouldn't have folks go to NLC. We're simply saying that, but to get some more time, some more opportunity to advocate on our behalf, a separate trip might be more useful.
And if I remember some of the discussions during PIR committee, um, it was felt that at least the PIR committee can go on, on a separate time along with Roberto and a couple other staff members, just to, um, meet individually with the legislators.
That's correct. The second trip was more a smaller contingent, is what we're recommending. So if that makes more sense to have PIR, whoever's sitting on PIR, and the mayor, then because of their, their purview, then that would make sense. But I think it would be ideal, or we would recommend to have a smaller group there to, to have a meeting.
Um, are you precluding other council members if I don't want to go to NLC, but I do want to go on the trip?
Absolutely not. It'll be your decision on how you want, how you want to do that.
I was gonna say, um, I was, I was on PR last year, and I'm on it this year, and like Debbie, I think we thought it, it's worth a try, and when our new lobbyists suggested it, and they have done it with other cities, and they felt like that it worked out a lot better, because, uh, those of you that have gone to NLC know that sometimes our legislators overbook, and we have our five-minute meetings in the halls, you know, or in the cafeteria, and that's, you can't get anything done then. So they really suggested that we at least give it a try one year and see if, if we could get something else done. And like you say, it's not just the legislators. It, we, they could set up meetings with transportation or, or whatever it is, you know.
I think that would be one of the major benefits.
Yeah, to get us into the right people at the right time.
During the NLC, we have that one day, so it's really difficult to do anything other than Capitol Hill visits. So if we have an issue with EPA, or if we have an issue with whoever it might be, it must be, would be a little more time and flexibility to meet with, with senior staff at those agencies.
And I know we're all busy and have certain jobs, but this would just be one, a one-nighter.
One-nighter.
You fly in one morning and come back the next night, so.
Yeah, we've talked about doing this a lo- for a long time, for a few years now, not going up there on that Wednesday, which I'm fine with. I think we should have a separate trip. And then in your memo, you talked about having it happen before April thirtieth?
Right.
Because of their calendar, so I think maybe we should, assuming we have more than six people that want to move, you know, go on a separate trip, we should talk about a calendar, time, you know, later, we can move very quickly and schedule these things.
Bob?
I think in addition to the limited amount of time that we have with legislators, a lot of times that's not with the legislator, it's with the staffer. So it's five minutes in the hallway with the staffer, so I would be a strong proponent of the second meeting as well.
Thank you.
Renee? I'm just curious if we've ever tried to set up a local meeting with them at their offices here. Um, and I'm thinking maybe that's the first thing we do, is set a time at their offices when they're gonna be here, and we make, we make the, the tribe over to their office.
Certainly, certainly an option and something that we probably, I think, should do in, in addition to just, and even if we do the trip, we should do that as well. And we have done some kind of department meetings with staff counterparts in the district offices, but I don't know that we've ever had council members or the mayor meet with Congressman Kopp, for example, in his district office. He's had different events, and obviously we, we haven't done anything intentional that what you're describing, Councilmember Peterson, and I think that's a good point we should pull on as well.
Thank you. Bob?
I'm just, it's, whether it's there or here is a great idea, whatever. I'm just intrigued that we think that there's anything in Washington that's worth going to all that trouble for. I mean, do we, um, every now and then we have a water issue or something, but I mean, I'm just intrigued that, the VA, we haven't made a difference on. I mean, I'm kind of going through the list over the years of the talking points, CDPG, CDPG, I mean, I'm just wondering, at some point or another, will we have, not, with the only game of town, we have to work with them, but will we at some point or another check or return on the investment of time and money that we're spending? Are we getting anything out of any of it?
I, I think that's a, a good point. I will say this, uh, although you weren't part of the RFP process, I think maybe Marsha and Debbie could speak to this. This firm seems to be particularly focused on grant and grant writing, and, not grant writing, but securing new grants and federal funding in light of not having earmarks. And so in that, with that approach, it does make sense for them, in their view, to say, if you're procuring dollars, it really is advantageous for Aurora to be in front of EPA when they're doing a new grant programs, or the Department of Justice when they're doing a new round of COPs funding for state neighborhoods, that it really isn't the earmarks for transportation, those more of those are gone, but to that level of federal officials and civil servants who are doing those, those grant programs, that, uh, it is advantageous for the city to have a profile and to have, to be known to those agencies, and in return, that we know what they're looking for in those grant programs, whether it's CDPG or COPs or across the board. So I will say to you that I, I, I agree that we've had some priorities and we're kind of waiting for something to happen. I think though, that now we're kind of being more aggressive on the grant side of it, that I think it's worth, uh, a year or two to look at how this firm does and how we do in raising our profile to get some more of those dollars, since we'll have a baseline of where we're at now, so, um, I'll wait and see how it looks.
Off room.
Well, you know, we were successful in obtaining millions of dollars for two-twenty-five as a result of working closely with our delegation, so I mean...
You're right.
We've had some major successes, and you can't, if you want to build up relationships, it's not a one-time, time thing, and you need, they have to know who you are and, you know, you have to build up a dialogue with them in order, and they, they need to know in the back of their mind when things come up, this is really important to Aurora, and they're not gonna know that if somebody isn't beating it into their heads.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just curious. I'm always thinking of the CDPG thing. We've talked about that for ever, never changed.
And I will make a point that I think that Holland and I, we're going through that process right now. They, they've had also a different approach on some of our priorities we had in the past, is they look, everybody has CDPG, you should put that as a footnote. That's really not anything, you should be more kind of focused on various things, IPD5, those types of projects that are much more unasked, that they can deliver on. CDPG, everybody wants CDPG.
Okay. I get it. No, I think that's logical.
Bob was here, and...
Yeah, and I, I guess my...
There's the person I just bumped out.
You can't change chairs, who would raise your hand?
Yes, I can. And I'm going to.
Okay. My, my comment is that, um, I, I think there's value in having a delegation go to Washington to, to lobby our issues, and the reason for that is, at least from politicians that I've known over the last thirty-three years, when, when they're back here, they're, they're campaigning, they're, they're making, you know, from town hall meetings, fundraising meetings, they have their staff here to do staff work while they're, you know, while, while they're in Washington, but it's in DC where they work and, and they actually have the time to focus on, you know, our delegation. So, I mean, I think there's value in going back there to lobby important issues.
Debbie?
Thank you. Um, and I wanted to address that issue as well, that it is good, while it's good to be in contact with, with our legislators when they are here in, in, in town, their schedule doesn't always fit our needs, so they may not be here before the session in DC gets started, so our priorities wouldn't be built. So if we meet them where they are and emphasize our priorities, then I think that's a good thing, and so I'm really in favor of a second trip as well.
Anything else? Question then is approval of a second trip, of another trip. Can I see a show of hands in favor? More than enough. All right. Thank you. Apologies to everybody, I was doing my civic duty and in the process of, uh, perhaps being selected for a criminal jury trial up in Adams County that would have lasted a week. And...
Didn't you tell him, do you know who I am?
I didn't think that would work.
Just tell him he's guilty.
I think that's what got me a lot of clout. All right. Issue update. Anybody have anything? Consent calendar.
You didn't give me a chance.
Oh.
I'm just not quick. I went to my, um...
Usually if I look twice, then you're there.
I know. I had to get there. Um, I'm really happy with Medicine Man. They opened in my ward. Marsha and I were there on Saturday morning, and I particularly liked that they took my initials and made such a lovely yellow... But anyway, Mr. Mayor, they were, um, sorry that you couldn't join us, but I promised I would bring you a goody bag. For the record, handing it over.
Any...
Thank you. Don't have those.
Let the city attorney be...
I'll check it out later.
Privacy of your honor.
Go get the lighter.
There might be something, there might be something good for my throat. All right. Anything else on your issue update? Consent calendar, any objections to... Brad?
No objection, but on two C, it appears both these applicants are from the same law firm, which is interesting, I guess, is the word, but I guess there's no prohibition of these folks being from the same law firm, they're applying?
There, there's no prohibition. The biggest challenge of Judicial Performance Commission is to find some attorneys to sit on the commission that would not have a case come before the city of Aurora, so, um, these two attorneys apparently will not have that conflict, so that's why they're being recommended. But you're right, there is no prohibition.
Okay.
Any objections to sending them forward? All right. Uh, three A.
Joe? Got it. Thank you. I'm gonna do a, a short presentation here on Colorado's water plan that Councilhead requested an update to. Um, upfront, I apologize if I start talking really fast, but my alma mater is playing for the national championship, so...
I think Marsha has a bunch of questions all of a sudden.
That's why colors, who that might be.
No time.
Marsha, let's start. Now, what color is white? Basics.
What is H2O? The, um, the water plan, actually, the information I'm presenting here was provided to IOPC back... What is H2O? The, the water plan, actually, the information I'm presenting here was provided to IOPC back at a briefing on May 14th at our regular monthly meeting. And this is an updated information and it's a report on the current status of the state's water plan. What's pushing the plan right now, what's the nexus behind this, is in May of 2013, Governor Peter Luber put out an executive order, it's in your backup, that directed the Colorado Water Conservation Board, who is the state agency that's responsible for, for water policy, to develop a water plan that does a number of things. Needed to reflect Colorado's values. It needs to support the implementation of the basin implementation plans and IBCC work, and I'll explain what that means in a minute here. And it's also a grassroots type plan, built from the bottom up. The plan actually is extremely aggressive. This process really started 11 years ago and it's involved hundreds of people, statewide groups, involved in discussions and looking at the, the state's needs and, and water supplies and looking at how, you know, we could put together, what we didn't necessarily, didn't necessarily call it a water plan, but look at concepts that everyone could work together and jointly meet all of the state's needs. With this executive order, the governor said, okay, you've got one year to put together a draft plan, put all that information together. It's going to be on my desk on December 10th of 2014 and on December 10th of 2015, I want the final on my desk and that's it. So it's created a lot of, I think, panic at the state agency as well as a number of the groups that are involved in this, but it's, it's been quite an effort. Purpose of, the main goal of the plan is to develop a secure water future for, for the state. And they wanted to meet the values, what they recognize as the key values of the state. And fortunately, one of the first ones identified by the governor is vibrant and sustainable cities. So that's good, that we recognize that as being at the top. But along with that are healthy watersheds in the environment as well as recreation and tourism. I mean, those are many of the reasons why people come to Colorado, why businesses are attracted to here. So it's all vital to the people here too, not just the cities. And also, it was recognized that agriculture is a very strong economic component of the state's economy. And we wanted to make sure that that stayed viable and productive. And so the goal, we wanted to meet all of those goals while developing this plan. Really, the process started back in about 2003, when we did something called the, or the state was started embarking on a process called the statewide water supply initiative. And that, or SWASI is what you often hear it called all these days. It's basically a technical study that the state did, that looked at a number of things. You know, they looked, the state demographer projections to develop population projections for the state statewide on a company, down to a county level basis, looked at all the needs of, of water needs of the state for all different uses. Really focused a lot on conservation, water conservation, particularly in the municipal industrial sector and MNI sector and what's been accomplished and what type of goals there ought to be in the future. And then also, obviously, water supply availability, how much water is there. And when you started doing that, what they identified were what they called the gaps. You know, you had a difference between what you projected to be the need and how much supply there was. And not surprisingly, you generally found that there was a gap in all those cases. There was always more, at least on a overall macro scale, there was more demand than less supply. There could be, there were some circumstances and some circumstances. But one of the focuses on that really became the MNI or municipal industrial gap, which of course is, you know, where at the center of. And they're, they're very concerned about that, looking at how to solve it. And for what, for better or worse, and probably not necessarily justified, the MNI issues really became the focal point out of this study and continued on through the Colorado Water Plan of, basically, if we could solve MNI issues, we could solve everything, seems to be the mantra a lot of people were put forth. One of the other things they did start looking at that, although it wasn't called the water plan, is they started looking at what type of projects are out there to, to reduce these gaps, handle the gaps, what other things should we be looking at, different processes or methods that could help solve or diminish or eliminate those gaps. Should point out that, you know, Aurora, they did this on a basin, on a statewide basis, but we're looking at it on, by individual river basins. Aurora's considered part of what they're calling the metro, actually the metro basin, and we'll see what that is in a minute. The, the gaps, just in the metro basin area, basically which is the front range, were identified to be by 2050, anywhere from 63,000 acre feet a year to 190,000 acre feet a year, which is huge. You put that in perspective, we use around 50,000. So pretty significant. That's today what we use. And those numbers can vary all over the place depending on what the actual population growth is here by 2050, you know, projections are, we're going to double statewide by 2050. You know, there's climate variability issues out there that have, that can affect what those projections are going to be. And one of the biggest things is actually success of planned projects. Should point out that, you know, we have that big gap, but in Aurora, in our planning, we don't show any gap. But that's because we have plans in place out through 2050 that would meet that gap under these different future scenarios. Now, that assumes that we're successful in our projects. Everybody else has projects too, but they, they looked at this on a statewide basis, say, well, how successful are all these projects going to be? Is everybody really going to build everything they, they say they're going to do? What if it's, you know, 75% successful? What if it's 50% successful? And obviously, those numbers go down, the gap goes up, gets a lot worse. Another part of the process was, our, behind the whole state plan was what was called House Bill 1177 passed in 2005. That was the Water for the 21st Century Act. What that did is it created these basin roundtables that I didn't mention. There are actually nine basin roundtables. Eight of them correspond to the river basins in Colorado. Of course, Aurora's, you know, we're in the South Platte. They actually broke out though, created a separate basin roundtable called the Metro Roundtable, just because the metro front range area is so different from the rest of the South Platte where that's very rural agricultural and we're obviously, you know, municipal industrial in our sector. So we have a separate roundtable there. Each of those roundtables has 40 to 50 representatives that sit on it. The municipal water providers are represented there. So are representatives from counties, from the agriculture, industry, environment, recreational groups and all. Basically, the process that we have with these roundtables is, is kind of the heart of the Colorado Water Plan. And we've actually, through the different basins, they've developed what they call basin implementation plans to try to address their specific future needs and concerns and issues. I think one of the things that's happened is discussions at these roundtables and, and through another process called the IBCC, which I'll explain, that have really begun to address a lot of the barriers that exist between the different basins and issues that we have, helping everybody understand what all their issues are and trying to work towards solutions on those. There's also, as part of the roundtable process, significant funding that the state provides. And that's funded through the state, the, the, what's it, the severance tax fund, that's oil and gas revenue, which of course is probably going to be dropping significantly this year. With the statewide funds, there's been up to $40 million. It's already been funded for different types of studies related to the water plan, but also related to these basin implementation plans, as well as there's another $23 million that's been funded through the basin roundtables since 2003. That's ongoing, gets refunded every year. The roundtables in Colorado's water plan, like you mentioned, each of these roundtables are drafting this basin implementation plan. We actually, the, the one that Aurora or the Metro Basin was involved in, we actually joined with the South Platte basin and did a joint basin implementation plan for this for a specific purpose, because we figured that it really wouldn't make sense to have two separate plans together within the basin. That was, a draft of that was completed in July of 2014. And elements of that plan, as well as everyone else's, all the other basins is all incorporated into the draft Colorado Water Plan. Frankly, one of the issues though, that actually came out of this water planning process, I think it was somewhat of a setback, is that, as I mentioned, how the different roundtables and the communications going on between them about understanding issues, because of the mandated deadlines that were put on us by the governor, a lot of walls started going back up. And people started saying, well, you know, we aren't going to solve this in one year. So in that case, it better just go back to not in my backyard and, and, you know, like, it's my water, you can't have it type of attitude. And that's been a setback in, in the whole process for, for everybody, I think. So as I mentioned, the Metro Basin did a South Platte River Basin Implementation Plan along with the South Platte Roundtable. Number of challenges that we looked at in the South Platte that are really kind of unique to the South Platte is, one of them is the diversity of the basin. You know, we have very urbanized industrial basin along with agriculture. I think seven of the top 10 agricultural producing counties in the state are in the South Platte basin. You know, Will County's number one. And then obviously, all, you know, so industrial is concentrated here. Basically, 85% of the demand in the state, demand for water is, is focused in the front range area. And that's always created one of the problems, we pointed out in the past, is that 85% of the water is on the western slope. So that's always been an issue for all of us. But there's environmental and recreational needs that we recognize also within the South Platte, it's not just in the mountains. And realize too, that the South Platte does cover all the way up to the continental divide on the South Platte side. So there is, there's mountain areas that are part of the South Platte basin. Another unique part that we're looking at, that we're dealing with in the South Platte is the urban environment. You know, while everybody recognizes the value of the, the watersheds in the mountains and the recreational economy and the environment there, there's also a real value, an important aspect of our economy and quality of life in the urban, rural and recreational landscape here. And a lot of that focus hadn't been made until this plan was put together. Of course, we have a number of water rights issues and we have agricultural purchases as well as many of the communities here. So agricultural use is a big issue. And frankly, water storage, I mean, that's been a conversation we've had many times recently. Bottom line is, there really hasn't been any major group storage in the last 20 years. Most of that's been an issue, no. So the financing has been permanent. Basically, the will, state and federal levels, not the local levels. The other part of the 1177 Act was the creation of these inter-basin contact committees. It's got a membership that actually has representatives from the basin roundtables. It's got a governor-appointed membership, two legislators as well as six governor appointings statewide. CWC pushes to support it. Again, it's, it's kind of a snapshot of the basin roundtables. You see all the different people involved. And that's where a lot of the good conversations have come, where we've been looking at breaking down some of the barriers that exist between us. When you look at all these meetings, I mean, each of the basin roundtables, there's been over 100 meetings in each basin roundtable already. Another one is happening this week. The IBCC has had 49 meetings today. The 50th meeting is happening at the end of this month. These meetings have been going on for a long time. Obviously, with that amount of time, membership has transferred, you know, changed and people have retired. Some people have passed away. You know, it's, it's been a long, long process. But the, the IBCC.
Ask a question.
Who do we have on these committees that represent Aurora?
Yeah, I'll, I'll explain that actually in the next slide here. I can tell you who we have. Just to finish off with the IBCC, it does have these different activities. It also has produced some documents themselves that actually are part of the plan. We have something that's called a low and no regrets action plan that identifies things that everyone agreed to that probably could be mutually beneficial and mutually agreeable to everyone that they could implement. There's also a conceptual agreement that's been put out that's a subject of a lot of controversy right now on how future trans mountain diversion projects can take place. Aurora's involvement in this, on the IBCC, well, first of all, we're actually a voting member of the Metro Roundtable. I'm a member of that. And, and we've had someone on that ever since the, the group was started. There's always been someone from Aurora staff on that. We also sit on the Colorado Arkansas and South Platte because we get our supplies from there. We're not voting members of that, but we do have a voice to serve the act. People attend those meetings and be part of that process. And then with the, each of the roundtables, two representatives get voted by the roundtables to be on the IBCC. And so I'm a representative, I was voted on to be a representative of the IBCC, so I also sit on that. And other members from Aurora have participated in that before me. So we've always had actually a representation involved. So we have pretty good representation there and been part of that discussion. I won't go in any more on that, but if you have questions on those, we can get into those. All of this kind of leads to what, you know, Colorado's water plan. You know, the components that have led up to it are SWASI, the basin roundtables and basin implementation plans and the IBCC process. And what happened is since May of 2013, CWCB has actively been putting together sections of this plan. And they've been coming out piecemeal. They really didn't start coming out for review until spring of 2014. We started seeing them piecemeal. A number of people started commenting. There were some very concerted efforts, especially admirably from the environmental groups, they were very organized and they started creating formal letters and all kinds of comments were coming in. You know, we were involved, since we're on the committees, we're involved in the discussions. We decided to wait till we had a complete plan to actually start submitting formal comments because it was very difficult to tell where certain things would be addressed and not until you had the whole package together. We provided our formal comments in October. They took those comments along with all the others they got. So far, they had, just on, all those draft sections, they had over 13,000 comments come in. And they had to filter through all of those. This was all CWCB staff. I don't think they even had much contractor help on this. So they've put in a lot of hours on it. They attempted to respond to all of those and incorporate them in some way. And the comments we provide are actually consistent with what discussed back in May with IOPC and I'll be mentioning here too, what are Aurora's key issues or that they're pushing forward. All of this actually culminated then in the draft water plan. It's put out in December 10th of this last year. I'll give you at the end here a web page. You can go download it if you want and look at it. It's 419 pages long. They have a comment summary document that's 110 pages long. And if you actually want to read the comment document itself, it's 1199 pages. And I could load all those on my iPad except the last one. It keeps breaking when I try to get them. So I gave up on it. Including, including our comments are in there. So what were some of the major issues that we were addressing for this plan? Conservation was a big one. Conservation, like I said, for better or worse, it always had that target on it, especially MNI conservation. And we wanted to make sure that the successes we've had are recognized, not just Aurora's, but, you know, frankly, most of the metro area, most of the cities have done quite well in conservation, especially in the last decade, a decade and a half. We want to make sure that that was always recognized. You know, we are all starting from scratch here. We've done quite a bit already. Frankly, there's a lot of special interest groups out there. It's not necessarily from the state, but it may be from some state legislators as well as some groups and, as well as some other basin roundtables outside the metro area that are really looking at implement, they want to push to implement land use controls. And this is obviously something that will be very much of interest to city council. You know, there was some legislation last year that was out that didn't pass, but it's going to resurrect again, I think this year if it hasn't already. And, you know, that was looking at putting in controls when if you use agricultural water for your development, that any developer that uses that, it's going to have limitations on how much water they can apply to outdoor use from that agricultural water. So basically, it's a, you know, lawn size legislation type restriction that's on. So those, we expect that those types of top, that while it's not in the current plan, it's noted that those discussions will take place and we'll expect over the next year to hear more about it. Alternatives to buy and dry, they call them ATMs, alternative transfer. That's another issue. They really want to preserve agriculture, but, you know, we're recognizing that there are different ways of doing it through leases and all, not to mention that Aurora's done quite a bit of that. In fact, Aurora's been singularly successful in the state of doing these types of ATMs. We also want to make sure they recognize our existing planning efforts. Like I said, we don't have a gap. We have, that's because we have plans in place. And, you know, the storage reservoirs we've talked about, there's prairie waters expansion, what we have in our base project, as well as the lake can be expanded up to the 50 MGE, and all of our other projects that were on Eagle River, Homestead Two, like project development. With all of those in place, those are called IPDs. And they've recognized that those should be built and they shouldn't be considered as part of, they should be actually supported by the water plan and supported by the state. We need to make sure we're driving that home. And then future trans mountain diversions. These are ones beyond what we've already planned, but we want to make sure that those, you know, that that door isn't closed. And there are some that are trying to close that door and say, those are off the books, they'll never happen again. And even though we say, well, we're good to 2050. And even though we say, well, we're good to 2050, well, we don't also, you know, that's great if we don't grow anymore beyond 2050, but I don't think anyone's willing to make that bet. So we've got concerns beyond 2050, too, that we just don't want to close doors yet, and close doors hard for future generations. We're making decisions that impact, you know, our, the next one to three-year, four generations. We've provided the input on all of those issues to them, and actually, I've been really successful. They did address all of those, not always to the extent we would have wished, and so we'll keep pressing on some of those. But they have really recognized our accomplishments, especially in conservation, you know, and what they've put in there, and they put that in. You know, for instance, in 2002, our per capita uses dropped 30%, while our population's grown by 21%. Basically, our, you know, our total use has hardly gone at all in the last 14, 13 years. Also showcasing Aurora's visionary projects, and they've actually pulled that out, shown, you know, called out Prairie Waters, called out Y's, as being some innovative ways of solving the state's problems now, and that's the wave of the future. So they've gained a lot of support. They, we already knew they were gaining a lot of support locally, but the state has provided a lot of support through the plan. They're mentioned in there. And as I mentioned, our ATMs, you know, what we did in Rocky Ford Lease, as well as our Continued Farming Program down there that we've had in place, you know, that's, was back in 2003, and the Continued Farming Program's still going on. It's very successful, and it's pulled out as being, here's a way of doing an ATM. There's a lot of ATM ideas out there, but all they are are concepts, and none of them have worked, none of them have been actually implemented. So we don't hope any of them will work, except Aurora's right now. So that's pretty good. The other thing we wanted to address with them is, a concept that dated back to Swasey days, was there was, the planning had to be addressed through four legs and a stool. And I said that there's no one silver bullet that's going to do everything. You know, a lot of people would say, let's just do water conservation, we'll solve the state's problems. MNI conservation, that's all we need. We said, no, yeah, MNI conservation's a component, but there's our IPMPs, there's agriculture and ATMs, and there's potential new supply or trans mountain diversions that could happen in the future. We need to consider all of those. And we've been really pushing for that, and we expect to continue to push on that. And not only say we, I mean, it's basically the water providers are all in that same vote, I think, you know, is a very strong conservative message being sent in there. Another thing is one size fits all conservation has been a big issue. They seem to think, you know, they could, the rules they want to apply to Greeley will work just as well in Aurora, will work just as well in Commerce City and Colorado Springs, and they don't. We're all different, there are different types of land use and makeup, different water needs, you can't, you know, it's all apples and oranges, you can't do a one size fits all type conservation effort. And well, another thing we've been pushing back on is that, you know, we think just reasonably so, municipals should be, should incorporate conservation in their planning. I mean, it's the right way to do things, and it's the way everybody needs to, to work towards the future, but we think that just doesn't apply to municipal industrial. We're pushing for agricultural conservation and environmental recreational use, that, you know, we're using the minimum amount of water we need to get the benefit that's needed out of that water supply, and it should apply to everybody, and we're really pushing on that. Haven't been as successful yet in getting that message through, but we're hopeful. Another piece that we've really been pushing on is to recognize the value of urban water use. You know, often we do hear on the recreational environmental side, especially recreational side, they talk about the value of a waterway, next, you know, how much money kayak courses bring in, or the value of property along the riverbank in Winter Park. Well, there's a lot of value of property in the city of Aurora for the landscaping that they have, and what they have, what they need to maintain, I don't know how they need to maintain that, has some real value, too, and that, those numbers are important, and they need to recognize, too, that there's real value to urban landscaping. There's real value to things like our sports parks and facilities, golf courses. They just don't bring in money, you know, they bring in this quality of life associated, and all those values just need to be considered. We've been, again, pushing for our IPMPs. Funding is a big issue because we've been trying to push for more state support of funding. I think religionally, a lot of logic was, well, the municipalities, you know, they can take care of it, they'll pay for it all, one thing. And, you know, we can pay for ours, but we can't pay for everybody else's. You know, everybody's asked to figure out how to do that, and then frankly, there's a lot of small communities that just don't have the wherewithal to do it. And they are going, you know, for them to, despite, they're either going to need to depend on the larger utilities, or they're going to have to depend on the state. And we're definitely pushing on them depending on the state, and the state stepping forward and backing up the plan with some dollars. And another big issue is permitting constraints. I mentioned, reservoir hasn't been built in 20 years, a major reservoir, and the main reason is permitting. No matter what we do and what the state does, if we can't figure out ways to get past the permitting hurdles, especially on the federal level, it really doesn't matter, we're not going to get projects built. But there is also, familiar with the 1041 process, too, which is, you know, state, it gives state counties authority to basically have veto authority on, like most projects. That's how we lost our Homestead Two project back in the eighties. It was through the 1041 process, Eagle County Commissioner shut it down, even though we had the water rights and the federal approval. So what's next? We're still waiting to hear from the state on exactly what the process is going to be. I think they're going to be announcing that at the end of this month. They're going to be talking about what the next steps are going to be. It's going to be taking the, we assume there's going to be a number of things going on, where for instance, the Roundtable and IBCC meetings are going to continue, as I mentioned, we're already having some coming up soon. They are talking about having some more public and town meeting approaches, and there might be some opportunities there actually for even getting not only citizen involved, but possibly your council involvement, sorry. So we've had an offer from CWCB staff, the ones that are running this, and saying, if you'd like us to come in and do some kind of a presentation or discussion, do a workshop with council, would you like to do that? So we'll be looking for, as we go along, if there's certain issues that come up or direction from you, you'd like to do that, we can certainly help make that arrangement. You know, Aurora staff, we've been involved, we're going to continue to stay involved in this. And we obviously stay very involved in the technical side of the issues and operational, but as some of these policy level discussions start coming up, and we expect them to happen, you know, in this year more than they have happened in the past, regarding things such as, how does this plan actually be administered? Is there going to be additional regulations that the state's going to put on all of us? The local control issue, which is a huge one. You know, I think there'll be opportunities where if they want to engage City Council and that, we'll come to with those. You know, obviously, the whole goal of this, though, is it's still, in terms of political time, it's very quick, December 2015, they want to have a final plan up. So expect to be hearing more from us as this goes on through, or progresses. The, here's the water plan, the website, you know, you can go up to, it's an easy website, coloradewaterplan.com. You can actually go up there and look at it. You can access any of the basin implementation plans, you can look at the plan. They have some of it, like I gave you the short two or four-page newsletter that they provide, they update that about once in a quarter, I think, so they'll probably be coming out a new one soon. That provides some basic information and tools for you, our resources to go look for additional information. You can obviously look at that, download, and look at any of that you want. What we want to do is, before I open it up to other questions, to actually make sure I question out to you, is, as we get into these policy-related issues and how they come up and position, how would you like us to proceed with that? How would you like us to support? Would this council support us moving ahead with it? How would you like us to bring this information to your attention? We could do it through PIR, that's probably the most expeditious way of doing it. We could also, you know, come back in study session, although that takes more lead time because of council deadlines and process to get through, but we're looking for some direction from you, how you'd like us to go forward with that. We fully expect to be able to, if some of these come up, either writing some, probably drafting for you some individual letters that might address some of the concerns and passing them through you for your comments and editing, that could be signed by the mayor or by council. And, you know, whether or not that would be some individual letters, or it might be better to wait toward, more towards the end and send out a line that addresses many issues. As well as the council's support of any aspects of the plan, we can certainly put that together.
Bob Roth and Bob Rum.
Several things. First of all, one of the things that I heard loud and clear is the conflict between Western Slope and Metro Basins, and the fact that the barrier has been put back up, and that's pretty disappointing, just as a comment. The other thing is, the other comment is that I'm glad that they have at least listened to our concerns, and specifically on the Y's partnership, that it sounds like not only is it not affecting it, but they're using that as an example of lessons learned and add a boy on the, a pat on the back. And then, as far as the question for council is concerned, I'd like to request, I don't have a concern with it going through PIR, and I understand why that committee was selected, but I think it would be appropriate, I don't want it to go through two committees, but I think it would be appropriate for IOPC to at least get a, an issue update in the, you know, the portion of the IOPC meeting minutes that are not necessarily gone over in detail at every meeting, but just kind of an issue update of what the process is. I think that it'd be appropriate for IOPC to continue to be involved as well. Sorry?
Bob Rum. When the plan's finally completed, is it going to culminate in a legislature passing a bill or something, recognizing, or is it going to be an executive order? And if it's an executive order, does that mean that the next governor can come in and kick it out and you have to start over? How does that work?
Well, that was, it was an interesting discussion everyone was having. If this governor didn't get reelected, it's where the process would be, but since that didn't happen, it's, you know, the plan will go to completion. But it would take legislation to actually, actually would take legislation to create the teeth within to administer and enforce a plan, if it has enforceable actions, like say, conservation measures that have to be implemented by municipalities over a certain size or something like that. That authority doesn't exist right now, and the CWCB doesn't have it. The indications are that that's what they might be looking at legislation, it would pass that, that would provide that authority. Frankly, there was a big tug of war between the legislature and the CWCB last year because the legislature was fairly offended that they thought that the governor went around them by putting out this executive order and didn't include them in the process. So they were actually, at one time, I think, trying to pass some legislation that was going to kill the plan. I think now they came to some agreement to make it workable between them, but they do need to not necessarily have their approval, but everything has to be vetted through them. But ultimately, most of these issues, I think it's going to take a series of legislation, legislative acts, for these things to happen. And there's some things that may even affect our Colorado water law, you know, the statutory definition of our Colorado water law controls. So it'll be quite a bit of legislation.
Bob, you have another question?
Yeah, and then how does the, our federal friends fit into this? Were they involved with this process? You know, they're always doing things like saying, well, we want some kind of a super water right so that we can maintain stream flows and things like that. And if they're, if they have the ability to do that, they can throw everything into that.
They have, they've been privy to the discussions, they haven't been fully engaged in them. You know, where we think they're going to be more engaged is in the discussions on the permitting issues associated with projects. There's already been some discussion, you know, down at the federal level, and even looking to try to put some straw man projects out there for, who the president has initiative, I forget what he calls it, but he was trying to get some projects that were permitted through, and he was looking for some projects maybe on Colorado that could do that, and it came out within the timeframe he wanted. You know, you're right that that is an issue, what they can do, that the federal authority of a water rights is constantly something that's going to fall. As well as, we're dealing with the Colorado River Compact issues, we have to recognize that whatever we do within the state is being affected by what's happening with the Colorado River Compact discussions and the problems we're facing right now. We can't operate in that way.
Sally.
Thank you. If the policy questions go to PIR and IOPC, do they come, at what point do they come, do these policies come before the full council?
Well, that, I guess, if it's going to PIR, we'd probably look to PIR to give us that direction and say, this is now where we do believe we want to provide comments, we can take them back to council. I mean, we may need to fast-track some of those types of things in order to get the comments out in time when they're useful, usable by the state, but we can follow whatever procedure you would like to do.
I'm just concerned, when we're talking policy and water, that it's decided by two people on council.
No.
No. Can you explain that for me then, please?
PIR's authority as a committee relates only to state legislation. It doesn't relate in the same way to anything else that they handle.
I see.
Anything else that they handle operates just like any other committee. So if they're going to make, if there are presentations that are going to be made to PIR, PIR is going to hear it, make a recommendation, and bring it to council.
Gotcha.
Now, that may come to council in a variety of different ways. It may come in a study session, it may come in a workshop, it may come in an email, but it'll have to come to council.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm good with that.
I was just going to reiterate that, so.
Does anyone have any concerns with the suggestion that in addition to PIR being the primary committee, there be a report to IOPC as well? Anybody have a problem with that? Other questions? Anybody have a problem with the recommendation? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Six minutes. Do you have remote start on your car?
Now, which one is your Ellen Modern?
I have the C.
B. E. B. E.
All right. Cheers.
Thank you. Well, I went to a women's college, so you don't have to worry about me rushing away. It's my college playoff.
So you went to Ohio State also?
Mayor Hogue and council, I'm here this evening to share with you our conception of the Neighborhood Cleanup Grant Program. You may recall, in the 2015 budget process, you set aside $60,000, which equals $10,000 for each ward. So what you have for you this evening is an application form, as well as just a brief description of the program itself. Briefly, the goals are mainly four goals. The first is to improve a physical condition within the neighborhood. The second is to enhance neighborhood pride. The third is to promote neighborhood self-reliance. And the third is to increase communication between not only neighbors, but we view this grant as hopefully being a partnership with not only residents within the neighborhood, but also to provide opportunities to partner with nonprofit organizations, as well as perhaps businesses within that neighborhood as well. We hope to look to, especially our ward council people, to share this information. If you would like neighborhood liaison staff to attend your meetings, we'd be more than happy to, to discuss this program. And we are asking that the deadline for the applications be April 1st, because we feel that many of the programs themselves will probably be implemented during what we refer to as the growing season, pardon my funny season. So do you, do you have any questions?
Bob Roth.
Just confirmation real quick. So it's 10,000 per ward and no more than 5,000 for an individual application?
For an individual application, correct. But we also discussed in quality of life, the opportunity that perhaps maybe some neighborhood groups may want to work in partnership with others, which could possibly raise that amount of deaths.
And then also, if a ward does not use their allotted amount--
And then also, if a ward does not use their allotted amount, that it can be rated? I mean, sure.
What we talked about in the Quality of
Redirected, yeah.
Yeah, yes, we did discuss in the Quality of Life Committee that especially on, on April 1st, if we had more than a $10,000 amount asked for in one ward, and then, you know, we weren't able to at that time convey money to, to applicants, that we indeed would review and work with the council people in those respective wards to perhaps redirect some funds.
Thank you.
Go, welcome.
So, as the Ward 1 city council member, and you know, we only have a viable, two viable homeowner associations in Ward 1. I was thinking that I would form a committee out of my Ward 1 attendees and have them apply for something that would do well for the whole ward. Would that be acceptable?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think that would help encourage that partnership opportunity, and maybe we could even involve some businesses, and there's actually a lot of nonprofits based out of original as well, so.
Right.
Yeah, I see that. And, you know, this possibly, these monies could possibly also be leveraged with other great opportunities that may be out there as well. So we don't wanna limit ourselves at all.
Okay, good, thank you.
Marsha?
I've been approached by several people, and I, you know, I wanna make sure that this is broad enough, that it would cover, you know, Settlers Village wants to put up a new fence. But this could be used to help them do whatever is necessary to go toward their fence, whether it's hiring an architect or whatever to get their fence.
Possibly, you know, the city does, I don't know if our legal
I think they're trying to get their own finances.
But, oh, they're trying to do it themselves. Oh, that's interesting. Well, you know, one of the opportunities we described in the, in the backup that you received is to use this money to, to share communication, and that can become actually quite expensive in especially non-mandatory organizations. So certainly, you know, getting the word out regarding meetings, doing that kind of thing.
And how about a playground for a development? Maybe an HOA has apartments, you know, have more condos, don't have a playground for the kids, can it be used for that?
I don't see why not.
Right.
Yeah, and that's something we probably would also work with our, our Parks Department on as well, again, to perhaps leverage some opportunity, if that's possible.
So I could have, I could have 10, 10 groups that want $1,000 each, or, I mean, I could have one group that only needs 500, or however it's gonna be broken down to use the 10,000.
Yes, okay, yes.
Just a recommendation to change the name from cleanup to something else.
Okay.
Maybe beautify would be more appropriate, especially if you're talking about adding playgrounds or something, fences, that really isn't a cleanup.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Spiffa.
Beautification.
Beautification.
Beautification, that covers, I like that, yeah.
Any other questions?
With this suggestion of a name change, is everybody comfortable? Okay?
I just, do we need to say that it's not for an individual's benefit? Even if my entire ward agreed that one property was the biggest eyesore, the benefit to that would be to an individual? Do we need to specify that that's not what we had in mind?
We, I mean, I'm just
Fit that in if you think we Thinking of some of our more eclectic characters, and I just, there's no question that a particular property might be, who was that old back in the, for, remember the, oh, come on, brickholders?
Oh, yes.
I don't know if the family's still alive, my apologies, but
Brickmeyer.
Brickmeyer, Brickmeyers, yeah. But, I mean, there are just some stories that live on. We wouldn't want to benefit an individual homeowner, right? Do we need to say that? So that we don't set up any
We can add that to the program. It's really for a broader
Right.
Picture within the neighborhood.
But what if the neighborhood said, the one thing we need is, do we just, I just, maybe we'd feel better if it said that no one individual
Right, it's not
Homeowner property owner.
I think that the intent of the, of this particular
Right.
Program is not
Right, of course.
And so we can indicate
I guess, I just don't want somebody's expectations to be falsely led on
Sure.
By not specifying it upfront. No objections?
Are you gonna do any outreach to HOAs to what are known as programs available?
Absolutely. We're working closely with our communications staff. I actually met with them today about this and our other program, our Go Slow campaign, which is relatively new as well. I thought, we have a list serve for neighborhood leaders, and again, if you, if you would like to have any staff at any of your ward or town meetings, we'll be more than happy to attend and just take a brief amount of time to pitch this opportunity before April 1st.
When will this be on the website?
As soon as we make the changes to the title and add your, so certainly by the end of the week, if happy for it.
All right. Any objection to moving forward?
Bring it on.
Thank you.
Kim?
Well, good evening, mayor and council. It's nice to be back to talk further about our branding and marketing efforts. And in a minute, Dan Price, who you probably remember, who is the president and principal at Adrenalin, is going to come up and give you an update on creative and the steps we've taken since we last updated you on research. But before we do that, I wanted to thank our work group, city staff, and visitor Aurora, the Chamber, Fitzpatrick's redevelopment, AEDC, weren't here tonight, and also a few members of our CABC who are here to get the update as well. So thanks to those in the audience to support the effort. And Dan, if you wanna come up, we'll be as expeditious as you need us to be. We've left time for questions. Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back. It's always good to be able to return to a room. Wanted to just give you an update from where we were last time, and some of the update that I'm gonna give you, it entails some of the details from the last presentation, but I'm not gonna go into the details when those are up, so let's just do a quick review. This was the goal of the city when we started way back in the beginning for the brand and the creative collateral. We identified the target groups, you guys remember that slide, hopefully. We're gonna go back to this page in just a minute as we get into the creative piece that we put together. We talked about the top line people that were out the target, the Aurora employees, the developers and realtors, and the millennial professionals. Again, that will come up further into the presentation. The thing that I left you with last time was the big orange slide that says, what's next, and it was developing the brand. What we put together is the A book. The A book is the brand. The A book is the brand broken out in detail in a way that all of the partners and the city ambassadors can follow. This is really, when you, when you think of a playbook for a team, this is the playbook for the brand. It has a lot of details in it, a lot of descriptions, a lot of endorsement. It starts with why, why are we doing this book? It goes into the detail of the importance of teamwork, the importance of how we act, how we sound, how we look. It has the endorsement of these two gentlemen. Should I just leave that out?
That's better than Ohio State.
At least there's gonna be a winner off of this slide. A nice endorsement letter from these gentlemen. And a thing I wanna point out, this last paragraph, it starts with the process, okay? It starts with explaining how we got to where we are, talks about the research, talks about the findings, talks about the goals. I love this last sentence. "We're simply asking you to believe in what we are doing and help us to improve the perceptions of Aurora. We're all in, come join us." That's the message to the partners of Aurora coming from these two gentlemen, okay? So as we get into the book, you're gonna see the details and how people can respond and act accordingly to fulfill the brand. Because at the end of the day, as we go out with this message, if it's not across the board, if it's not in the campaign and in the materials that are happening in-house and through the partnerships, then it starts to go thin, and we don't want this thing to get thin. We want it to be strong, because it's a long process and it's gonna take a lot of effort. We talked about the brand foundation, a lot of this, we talked with you in the last presentation that came out of the research. A quick overview of what that research was, and again, what, what a fan, what a foundation is to a brand, the core values and how they should, how we should look, sound, and act. And we talked about, the more you know about Aurora's brand, the better you'll understand why we're asking you to follow the, the standards in these pages. Again, this is, this is a book that everybody can sit down and read quickly. It's 80 pages, but let me tell you, there's a lot of graphics, and you're gonna see those in a minute. I would read this in a heartbeat. We address the core values. These are, the beauty of this campaign, I have to be very honest, and this was a good thing. When we sat down with Aurora and we recognized that they were ahead of the game with this, okay? So we're following up to this, and with a lot of organizations that you go to work with, the goal is to write some brand foundational elements, some things like positioning statements, admission statements, and goals and core values. Aurora not only had the core values, they've got history with the core values, they've got stories about the core values, they've got actions that have already taken place. So it was a beautiful thing that we could actually drop those into everything that we're doing, and then as we move forward, we'll continue to embellish those and to, and to use them as an example of how things are gonna move forward. Brand implementation principles, important page here. This is telling people that these, to strengthen our city's brand, we will adhere to these five benchmarks. That the campaign is easy, and that it is easily recognized for the core strengths through all brand elements. So everything we do, everything we show, we've got to stick to these five points. There's a high level of recall of the brand attributes, and we're gonna talk about the attributes in a minute. The differentiation between Aurora and other cities is clear, so we wanna address the benefits of Aurora compared to other cities. Our brand story is properly represented through our tangible services, products, or lifestyle. And our brand perception of relevancy and hospitality is built on consistency. Now, the only way you're gonna have consistency is to have a playbook. I think if most of you watched the game last night, I'm not sure that everybody was on the same playbook, but that's another story. There are some deep routes, I think, that were certainly out of a different book. So when you think about behaviors and how everybody can participate, there's three points. It's how we sound, how we act, and how we look. Okay, to break that down, the voice in the sound, we use from phone etiquette to voicemails to conversations and emails to website content and social media. How we act, it's the conduct we display toward one another, toward our partners. And how we look, it's the color palette, it's the type treatments, it's the graphic elements, it's the photo selections and the treatments to those photos. That's what's in this book, okay? So we break those sections out into the brand positions. And we've got some fun facts down here, I say facts, but some very important messages. Our behavior and actions, as well as our colors, fonts, and graphic treatments can create positive thought. These are very key elements, and I, I love that I get a follow-up to a conversation about an identity for a program, because you guys recognize the importance of wording, okay? Same beautification versus improvement is a big deal, that's a nice change, I was happy to hear it. This book is full of those examples. We talk about the promise, we, we addressed this last time. Aurora is worth discovering, it's accessible, comfortable, and advancing. Talk about the essence of the campaign. The fundamental nature of our brand message can be summed up in a single word, enlightenment. And I'm gonna speed up a little bit. The value proposition, if you think you know Aurora, think again. So this is where we get into the actions that the staff and the partners can really grab hold of. We jump from the foundation of the campaign and the foundation of the Aurora message into the actions that they can take. We get into how we sound. Words are powerful, use property, they can improve perceptions, but used improperly, they can tear down cities. This is why Aurora's voice impacts our entire system of communication. We get into how to tell the Aurora story, and we break it down, you've heard the elevator speech, but we came up with how you talk about Aurora over dinner, when you've got a little bit of time on your hands, how you talk about Aurora over a coffee, and how you might talk about Aurora in the checkout line, okay? So what we did is we took a bunch of items that are important to discuss, and we broke it down to maybe just a couple that you wanna bring up, if you hear something that's either online and you wanna, you wanna, you know, actually say, great, great that you know those things, or if somebody's off on it, you wanna correct it. Last time we talked, we addressed the key attributes, the things that we really wanna point out, we told you there's five or six, well, there's a few more, but the key ones are in yellow. Low crime, proud to call home, comfortable, improving in schools. We also addressed the key targets. We broke out the developers and the realtors and millennial professionals, we put key messages into each one of these, okay? So when you're talking to these different groups, you're gonna talk about different attributes, and we're gonna give you an example of that as we talk about one of the first ads we're producing. Just more of the key targets. There's how we act. This is an important page, this is a, this is a, you know, this is kinda walking a fine line, because I think Aurora's got great employees, but there's, there's always people that just need a little education on, on how damaging their behavior can be, and we're not addressing any negatives here, but at the same time, we wanna point out that we don't want any cancers in the locker room, we want everybody on the same page, we wanna encourage people, and that's where these actions come from. We talk about the stakeholder responsibilities and behavior, everything down to language in the office, phone etiquette, greetings, four positive points you should convey over the phone, and we give an example of how if you address those attributes, the safety, the comfortable place to live, you put them into a simple phone message or a, or a conversation. And we just did some quick math, 2,500 employees times 20 phone calls or messages a day times five days a week is 1.3 million impressions per year, and that's just on the phone. If you ever called different companies, you know, I think, did I share with you guys the Men's Warehouse story, where I just called Men's Warehouse and the guy answered the phone, "Thank you for calling the Men's Warehouse, how can I make this a pleasant experience for you?" And that's a powerful statement, and somebody took a lot of time to put that together. That's what we want Aurora to do. And we're not suggesting that anybody just read a script, we're just throwing out some ideas on how you can work in safe city into a simple conversation you might have. Temporary messages, examples of how to lead those. How we look, this is a fun section here, I'm gonna fly through it, but while our actions are of vital component to the success of the Aurora campaign, the visual aspects of what we're trying to accomplish are equally important. So this is where we put together a lot of pieces. We put together typography, four or five different fonts, that everybody can use consistency, consistently. And let me tell you, fonts are very powerful. I mean, there are companies out there, Hewlett Packard uses two fonts, Helvetica and Times, okay, not even creative fonts. And we use Times, because there's a need for it, and I'll address that. But fonts can be so powerful, we did a campaign for one company, and the only thing we did on a billboard was their font, and people knew who it was. And that was after six years of using the same font. Colors, we have a full color palette that allows us to go from some very conservative messaging to some very fun messaging. So you can do any combination of these that you want, you can do purple and yellow if you wanna have fun, or you might do kind of the 7528 with, with the 7709 if you wanna do something that's more financial. We developed these pictograms, everybody recognizes pictograms every time you go to a restroom, or you walk up to an escalator or an elevator. Pictograms are very powerful, and they work across all forms of communication. The beauty of this campaign is that we are not out to do everything right now, okay? We're working with the graphics department here within the building, so that as they do their materials, they might develop some new pictograms as the needs arise, we will do the same. We've had conversation about how we're gonna form a library of those elements, and what you're gonna see is that we can take these pictograms and we can take these shapes that we've created, again, there might be new shapes to come, but as you put these things together, you can start to create patterns. Now, as you see these shapes and these patterns and these pictograms and the photos that we're gonna show you, as you see those things used over and over and over again, you're gonna start to see the campaign visually pleasing, visually telling the right story, and when you combine that with the actions and the attitudes and the beliefs and the language, all of a sudden, you've got something bigger than just an ad. We're talking about taking the colors and applying them to the, the patterns with the colors, and we give examples of how you can literally lay them on top of each other and play with some different variations of filters to create a lot of different elements within a graphic design. We talked about photography.
I was just, there was one called the As, where was the A in that? I, back another, back
And these are spreads, so I apologize that
Yeah, no, you were there, spread there that says As.
This is a series of four little As that make a pattern.
Where's the A?
Okay, there's an A right there, and then there's an A to the left a bit that's at an angle, there's an A down here that's on its side, and I'll get to the As in a minute, and you'll see how
Okay, no, no, I got it, oh, I see it, there it is.
I'm glad you're paying that much attention, because you're in the front row.
I guess, see?
I spent a lot of time in the front row, my education. So we'll jump ahead to the photography. Photography's key. There's thousand There's thousands of photos that are available to the city, but we want to make sure you're choosing the right photos. There's a big difference between showing a building and showing somebody interacting with another person in front of the building. So we go through things like show people over structure, show emotion. Less literal is preferred over showing too much. Use them in solid or gradient screens. So when you get into the photos, we just give examples of some beautiful photos. And these are all Aurora photos, okay? Nice close-ups, things are happening, very emotional. Something else you want to do with the photos though, we want to enhance these photos. And I'm not suggesting that we're going to make people different than what they are. But when you do a campaign, if you do an ad that just has a photo on it, it's really open for anybody to do the same type of ad. What we're suggesting is that you take those photos and you colorize them a little bit. Just notice the coloring in the windows. Very subtle, but it makes it part of the campaign. You can also take some of the patterns and lay them into the sky. And I'm going to show you some better examples of that in just a minute. Here's the letter As. When we first started this, we thought, how can we describe all the different personalities and the culture within Aurora in a very simple format? And we thought, typography again, is a way to say there's classy, there's fun, there's edgy. So we developed about five different As here. And we said, here's a way that you can always incorporate these things. And, and you're going to see this in a minute, it really does come to life. We developed some illustrations. So instead of counting on photography in all situations, sometimes you want to use illustrations because that kind of creates a little bit more imagination, if you will. Has anybody seen the recent McDonald's ad where it's all illustration? It's absolutely gorgeous. I think it's a minute long and it actually kept my attention, so. But we developed some illustrations and we recognized where they might be placed. But again, these illustrations can be enhanced over time as well. We're identifying email signatures, so there's consistency across all communication. Letterhead setup, we're saying this is the font you use, these are the margins that you use, this is the type size, these are the paragraph breaks. We want every letter coming out of the city of Aurora to look like it came from the same place. Remember the days where we circled our eyes and did the smiley faces? Okay. Some of you do. We have logo usage here. We've identified the proper colors for the logo. How you use it in color, how you use it in black and white, how you use it in reverse, what not to do to the logo. I've seen a few things in the past where they're skewed. We recognize when to use bitmap images versus vector art. Another issue that people have, and those are things that just kind of break down the performance of the campaign and really take away some of its integrity. We talk about negative space around the logo. That logo is not stretched, I promise you. It looks that way on the screen, but... When you bring all this together, there's about five examples here of how this campaign can use some of the elements, all of the elements, mix the elements, but there's a story being told here. Everything from if you want to use 100% photography, we have that. If you want to use a combination of photos and just simply go with the letter A, that has the Aurora look. If you want a few filters to the colors, that has the Aurora look. If you want to use an illustration and a piece of the letter A that's the script, it all flows together very consistently in all lines of communication. Now, the next steps as we move forward, there's one more section to the book that's important. And this is for people that might be new to the, new to the city and new to working within the partnership or the, or the city itself. We want to make sure they know what Aurora is. We want to make sure that they know the history of Aurora. We want to make sure they know the fun facts about Aurora. That they understand all the events that Aurora puts on, the facilities that Aurora oversees, and the departments and the divisions. So a quick overview of what Aurora is all about to somebody who might start their job tomorrow or a partnership. We even have an area for questions, so just lay them on the cam. So the next step as we move forward, I, we talked about...
I do have a question, if I didn't see it. Do you address writing styles, like when you capitalize and you don't? Is that going to be considered as well?
I'm trying to think if that is in there. And there's some AP rules and I'm not sure that we've addressed them in this book. But there is situations on, I do think we have some capitalization issues like city of versus uppercase lowercase. But no, we did not put the AP type rule.
It's pretty expansive, so if we get questions, like the biggest question we get is capitalized C or not, we do not. We follow AP, Associated Press style, which is a lowercase. So we can make a quick reference to that and certainly they can call for any assistance on the detail.
Okay. Your shirt matches almost all of the colors in the slides. Is that purposeful?
It is.
You know how expensive it is to dress to match every campaign?
That's why he's all mental, so they make it a problem all day.
I was, yeah, I was going to wear, I was challenged to wear two different shoes and see if anybody would notice. So the next thing we want to do is we address the millennials as a very important target in the first year. The developers and the, the realtors. And then we also address the number one group, the city employees and the partners. We're going to do city training and we're going to open it up to the city partners. And that's going to start in February. It's going to go through the 25th. During that time, we're going to do a full presentation, kind of the rah-rah presentation, the importance of the presentation, and we'll break out the book and the, and the steps that are going to be followed there. I also want to show you what's happened with the launch. So some of these pieces have not gone out in the campaign, but they've gone out from the internal department. And it's important that you see how they've already taken the elements that we put together and they've started to embed them into all of their communications. Now, what you're going to see here is even though they're not part of the campaign, they are part of the communication and they're part of the brand strengthening. The example of the photo that I gave you where you could lay in the pattern in the background, all of a sudden, that makes that the Aurora campaign photo versus just another photo. So the, the internal department has built some illustrations. And this is, I love the examples because it shows you how everything can incorporate this new book. So now we're starting to build that McDonald's brand, okay? We're not, everybody's not off doing what they think looks good. They're following the guidelines. I think that might be it. The first thing we're doing with the campaign is we've got an ad due in the Denver Business Journal coming up. I think it's on the 23rd. It's in a special section addressing the, the development that the city, I guess, future development. And Kim can go into it a little bit better, but the ad that we're doing is focusing on doing business in Aurora. Now, when I talk about those attributes a few slides back and I say that there's different target audiences and how you can address different attributes regardless of who you're speaking with, we're going to address the safety of Aurora and the, and doing business with Aurora and the quality of, of the people that you're going to work with. So we're going to address two different attributes within that ad. And it will be going out into the DBJ in about two weeks. So that is the presentation. I'll open up to questions. I think I stayed...
Further questions.
Further questions.
Let's, Molly, Brad, Sally, Marcia, just come down to the table.
I'm excited. I, I still have to go back to the day one, just not on the slide. Well, it is, but, and just sort of not prehash the debate. But if our own residents and citizens don't get it and can't describe it when, and they're like the last group you're investing in, but they're the ones that are going to be at the hairdresser and say, hey, I saw that ad about Aurora. And they're going to go, really? I didn't see it. And that's going to discount everything that we're doing? Can we move up the residents on the roster of, of, of targets? Because it just strikes me as if our own people don't know what we're doing. They're going to, not intentionally sabotage it, but...
And there might be some opportunity through some of the communications that are taking place with the residents where this can be described. But I'm not sure that we want to target them necessarily in the form of the campaign that we're going to use to target millennials and, and the developers and the realtors. I mean, part of the thought is if you've got somebody who's a big fan of something, they're, they're more likely to understand what's happening within it. We're not going to keep it from them. We're just not going to do advertisements that target them. But there could potentially be a website that they'll be aware of. But there could potentially, go ahead.
But there could be. I mean, you have a role in Aurora. Be an ambassador, blah, 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 blah.
Yes. Yeah, those things can be done. I mean, there's a lot...
My people tell me all the time, they'd love to wish they had something good to say about Aurora other than on Havana, which is awesome, but...
Maybe there's just a, maybe there is some, some communication that can go out that incorporates what's happening with...
And we do have these conversations...
Perhaps be done through a news letter, an award council member.
I like the idea. I mean, you certainly don't want people to get caught off guard.
Yeah, really. And I mean, there, I just want it to go well.
In addition to what Dan said, the other consideration that we're working with is the budget we have assigned and how much bank for our budget we get. So we had some of that conversation, but we're, we're flexing already some of the, the order of things. And so we're very mindful of that. We recognize the importance of that. But frankly, we had a lot of great Aurora ambassadors in the research that we had. So that was one of the reasons they didn't quite rise to the top. So, but we'll take that back to the group and see what we can do with that with resources allocated.
And I think Kim's point is an important one for council. There's only so much you can do with the dollars that have been approved so far. What we're getting from these folks is their best advice on what we can do with the dollars that they have available. You can always do more if council decides to allocate more money. So you keep that in mind. I'm not, I'm not obviously saying that's what we automatically should do. But, but keep in mind, we, we paid these guys for their advice. They're giving us the best advice they can give us with the dollars that they have available. I'm glad everybody's excited, but if they say, well, wait a minute, it's not because they don't want to do it, it's because they only have so many dollars to work with. Keep that in mind.
And a big part of all of this was to change the perceptions. And if the goal is to change perceptions, we discovered in the research, people that lived here, the people that know Aurora the most, they don't have the misperceptions. And remember going back to the, the point that I made where from the research, if somebody hadn't been to Aurora in a month, then they were the ones that had the false perceptions. But people that visited, those perceptions started to disappear. So we don't, we don't see the residents as the target for the campaign, but they should be.
Brad, Sally, Marcia.
A flippant question and a serious question. What's Adrenalin doing to get an NFL team in LA?
I was quoted in the Denver Post the other day over that. And I gave the accolades to, to, I think to Mr. Anshu, if you want to develop downtown.
My, my serious question, one of them is, the book about, well, I was really intrigued by the dinner conversation, coffee and in the grocery store. You know, I'm aware of a private sector company that has an ambassador toolkit app for the phone just for their employees. So stuff like that, I'm thinking can just go on an app or internal. I mean, if an employee is at the grocery store, they call out this app and say, hey, here's what I want to tell you about Aurora in whatever situation they might want to be in. So it seems like that might be a possibility.
There, you know, there's a whole social component to every campaign and certainly the apps are rising up there as well, but it's, there's a lot of decisions yet to be made beyond what we're doing for the staff presentation because we did target the, the partners and the staff as the number one group to, to engage. But there could be some things down the line. I'm not sure, you know, the cost of an app fits within the budget, but everything can be looked at.
I'm thinking if, if there's an app to be done, it would be for the employees first. And then I think at the end of this whole thing, you're going to go kind of, kind of broader, broader audience maybe to the media. I think at the end of your chart there, your Gantt chart, isn't there an opportunity to go to the media and say...
Are you talking about the, the chart from the beginning where we addressed the groups? The media was, was not part of that group, but we feel like the media is there all the time anyway.
Because I think, you know, I, I see what you're trying to do.
And that's a good thing.
Trying to do with the employees and then the residents. And then at some point in time, you got to go to the media or promote this Aurora to the media. Because the media is, I think, part of the problem with the perception.
Yeah, we've had that conversation. It's a slightly different track than this, but frankly, something that we do on a pretty regular basis. So we've got two of our folks here tonight. We can talk a little bit about what we're trying to accomplish, raising awareness for people who haven't been to our community a long time, as much as it is kind of perception. But, but yes, we certainly recognize the need for media to be able to... We didn't put it quite in the strategy because this is pure marketing. And you don't market the media. So there's a good strategy to that.
Yeah, I just think there's an opportunity. I mean, a lot of that stuff up there, the media, would be really nice to get that information to the media so they could help. I know you do it every day, but you still see stuff that just makes Aurora in a bad light. And I just think that we're trying to do this effort on branding and marketing. Why don't we, why don't we at least engage the media on this effort at some point? Maybe it's at the end of this process.
Well, and I would go back to what Kim said. There's, the media department is doing that on a daily basis, but this was an entirely separate budget to address different needs. Certainly, we're not keeping it from the media and that's obvious with them being personal.
Thank you. I, I wanted to show you a flyer that we, we just produced for Ward One, Hopman Heights. If you could look at the colors and look at the fonts, they're identical to what has been promoted right now. These, this flyer is going to go to, we're going to drop these, this, to the people in Hopman Heights go door to door. And to tell them that they can pop tops and they can scrape and they can expand because the folks in Hopman Heights do not know that. So that's what this flyer is. But I just thought it was curious that you could see right now how beautiful. I mean, this is an absolutely gorgeous flyer. I'm, I'm really proud of it. And I would like to give it to the press.
So one thing I want to touch on, and I may have said this earlier, but when you do a campaign, you really want to create that stop sign image. The image that everybody looks at, they know what it means from the second you see it. If things like this start going out from all areas and communication is consistent across all platforms, then as the campaign grows, people will see these things and they won't have to stop and think, who is that from? They'll automatically know that's a piece from Aurora. And then they can dive into the details of it. And once you have them on that level, you can get through trying to tell the story a lot quicker because you're not trying to tell who the story is from. But that's well done.
Isn't it?
It's like, it's like teaching your kids to ride a bike, you know? And now you can just let them get a paper round. Well, that's a bad example.
Now, I was curious, I don't know who knows the answer to this, but we, we funded Adrenalin. We funded branding for TOD stops. That was a different company, correct? And now we've also funded art on the, for the one TOD stop over Colfax. Did they not collaborate together? I mean, you're saying everything really needs to be the same, but yet we've got three different groups out here giving us different artwork, different things. And I'm thinking, what, what did we do? We should have them talk so we can all have the same brand.
Well, I would do the art on, at, at the TOD stops being totally different. That's a, that is truly an art piece. This is not, we're going to have lots of art pieces we do and how all our pieces are going to fit into this program. It is not a communications or marketing piece.
But one thing we did say was we wanted that to, we want, we really want to expand that should we have the money. And we want those stops, those art pieces to say Aurora, right? So people know...
We want to be iconic art, but, but it won't necessarily fit into the, to the branding. I think we have talked about the need to, to make the, to relate the, the marketing for the TOD sites with what we're doing here. We're even going to, we're working on signage in this building. We've talked about how we make sure that the signage in this building we're working on are consistent with the, with the marketing and branding.
I'm meeting with the signage company tomorrow. So we're trying to make things fit.
I like your ideas.
But there's some things, you know, the public art, you really can't touch. However, if there's ideas and, and budgets down the road to, you know, if, if there's new areas where you can assign artwork, then maybe the city buy their own space, however it works. I'm not into that, but, and they create ads or, or graphics that fit that space, the futures, you know? It would be nice.
And we don't get to flip the switch on one day, so it's a little transitional. But Bob's on our work group and then Lori's been very engaged in the TOD stuff. So we're integrating everything to her point.
Absolutely. That's what I, it's a step I just... We want to make sure that we don't have three different things out here. We all come together.
And, and back to the point of the signage in the building. I mean, we're having conversations of some of the wording that might go on certain signs and how it will better flow out of perhaps our involvement versus what was in the prior. So I just, there are some conversations.
Other questions? Terrific.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, items from city council, CML, National League City. Anybody have anything? I don't see any hands clawing up. I'm slave up there. Mike Schleib, are you gonna cover this this time?
Well, there's nothing to cover. It hasn't yet, under the new chair, so...
Denver Regional Council, cover.
Just one thing, well, actually two things, but they're combined. So as the new secretary for Dr. Cog, I conducted, I ran the first IMVI meeting of the year last week, and it was very interesting, because for my first meeting, it was very contentious. I can tell you that by the fact that there were 25 people in attendance, and two of the votes were 13/12. So it was a very interesting meeting. And in conjunction with that...
Sounds a little like homes.
Except there's a lot more of them. In conjunction with that, what we were discussing was phase-two funding for the TIP program. And I reported at last council meeting that out of $131 million and change of funding available, Aurora got $17.514, or about 13.5%. That's the good news. And the bad news is in the second phase of funding of $51 million, Aurora got zero. And that was, that was due to the fact that there were basically three scenarios that were given by staff for the funding of the $51 million. And one of the scenarios just happened to have $0 for Aurora, and that was the scenario that was voted in 13/12. So, but overall, we did very well with the, we did very well with the funding process. And thanks to staff, we represented very well. Out of 53 municipalities, we got 13.5%.
That's, that's pretty good.
FRA.
I just have two things. Perhaps you know, or maybe you don't, the mayor is the chair of FRA. Sally Monier is Secretary Treasurer now. Dan Ritchie, whose name everyone should know. Dan Ritchie is now on the board, has just been appointed to the board upon the recommendation of Bruce Benson. So we're looking forward to working with him on that, on FRA matters. The other item that you may have seen, Lily Marks, who is also a member of the FRA, has just been appointed to the Kansas City Federal Reserve Board.
Wow. She is Miss Money.
Yeah, yeah. So in any event, that's my update for the FRA.
That should give us a lot of valuable connections, both of those.
For, for the city, yes, without question.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Just as an FYI, the Medicine Man did $25,000 in business on Saturday.
Retail sales? How many dollars is that? What's the revenue to the city?
I don't know.
Two, three and a half, five and a half?
Five and a half.
About three grand.
5.75.
Jason's Realtor Turner.
Yeah, Jason's Realtor Turner.
Steve's looking to see how much of the $25,000 sits there as well.
Not in there.